Good things here, so I'll call the meeting back to order. And next up, we went through the presentations. We did the write out, write in, so reports and updates. We have administrator's report, correct?
I don't have anything official to report. Planning board chair is not here, so he doesn't have anything to report. The only thing they covered in their last meeting was the survey, so...
So we'll table that for next time. You don't have anything to report, so now we're moving up. PRG fish is...
And Mary left.
She had to leave, so...
But great job for the tree lighting.
Table it.
For everybody that helped and participated.
Right, we've mentioned that, council comments.
Well, I know, but like PRG helped like, you know.
Okay, definitely the report, we got that. We're moving very long. Roads resurfacing.
I don't really have a whole lot to report other than what was in the agenda packet. The memo outlined it pretty well. Basically, this was our first year, our first stab at things. We understand there were a lot of issues and problems that we tried to reconcile as best we could, but we were held by what was in the contract with DOT, which was pretty standard language. So at current, they are not looking to fix any of the issues that still remain. The biggest issue being there's a lip variation at Canfield Creek from some curb to the existing asphalt, but it's within the realm of DOT standards. It's acceptable to them. All roads were inspected by DOT and our engineers, and they all seem to be...
I guess the complaint I heard is that transition from the new, and maybe you can share more if you've heard from the neighbors, but transition from the new resurfacing to the old, there was a lip there, someone was riding a bike, created a little bit of a safety concern on that part. Or maybe the road... But the roads are fairly smooth. I've heard nothing but good things from Oak Brook. And this is just the good people I know there, but is that... It's just not a fix because it's an overlay, and it is what it is, and they can't...
Well, they were technically supposed to mill down to the curb, but they're saying what they did is fine. And I don't have a dog in the race other than they were... The way it was sold to us, not sold to us, the way it was described to us when we went into it, as the older name goes, they would mill, not the entire road.
Right, just the right by the curb.
Right.
Yeah. Dig that out a little bit.
They dig it out a little bit, much like you would sort of use a hole around the garden. Do that, and I guess that just didn't save it.
Yeah, and he's right. That's how it was presented, is that they would do the profile mill. But at the time that... So that was what was in the contract that we had with DOT. But at the time, DOT let it to their subcontractor, it was deemed not necessary, so they didn't do it.
So can we fix that next time?
Well, but the DOT made that call, but if they sold it to Restlet, that's what they were going to do. And then DOT goes and make that call. Where was AMT?
The AMT was there, and there's some language that they have in their contract that allows them to deem whatever's necessary, so we...
So can we fix that?
Joe's right, and you know, where was AMT? But they weren't physically there when it came in. You just look at the language. I'd figure that with Joe said, and just say, you know how I feel about AMT wasting time, like driving down my road. And they've got 750 bucks in a month driving down my road, which is not going to go on. Why aren't they in Canfield checking when a road is being resurfaced instead of just driving around town?
They did go, yeah. Yeah, they did go into AMT, I mean, Canfield and inspect, and DOT had an inspector on the property.
After.
Every day. They didn't go into... AMT did not go into Canfield every day, but DOT had an inspector every day going in. AMT did go out and inspect, I can't tell you when, but they did go out and inspect. And it should have been caught. It wasn't caught because it was not in the contract with the subcontractor. It was only in the contract with us and DOT, and so, so no one caught it.
Well, in the future, if we're stuck with a four-hour limp, or a four-hour minimum with AMT, I would encourage you to spend that money on an inspecting road resurfacing rather than just...
While they're doing it.
Well, and those are two separate...
That's when you catch it.
Those are two separate things that we need to figure out. And that's another whole separate issue, and that's what's called our general inspection, where they go out and inspect subdivisions. And so it may be worth looking at our contract with AMT and amending what that general service includes. But that road resurfacing inspection and general inspections would be treated as two different issues. So we need to look at basically amending our agreement with DOT.
What is inspecting subdivisions down, or what are they looking for?
Well, I can tell you from my subdivision, which the road, the utilities are done. The roads and hidden tails going out there and sitting in the truck.
But I'm saying a subdivision like Canfield, or Monmouth Creek, or Fireth, they're already built, so I mean, what is AMT looking at?
They shouldn't be out there.
I'm saying, so are you looking at only new?
No, they didn't.
They were inspecting new ones, but what's the criteria for new? And what I was told is available lots. When there's available lots in Firethorn, there's available lots in Providence. Yeah, there's one left, I think, in Providence Estates. There's available lots everywhere. I think there's one in Metalar. But that's not a good definition. And she's talking about fixing it, so I'm not...
Yeah, I'm saying, because I mean, like the Howard property, I mean, there's... We have the Howard property, but nothing's been done on it, and nothing's being done. So what are they inspecting at this point? There's really nothing for inspecting, nothing...
That's what I'm saying, they were coming out of time.
I mean, if you have an available lot, but nothing's planned for it, we have no application for a building or something, what are they inspecting?
When I asked the guy, he said, "I gotta get four hours in." That was the answer.
Well, like I said, I...
We're spending money on nothing.
Yeah, and that refers back to when we were talking about the sheriffs, that they have to get four hours, but you know, they're only spending an hour and a half on directing traffic. The other three hours, we want them out there doing patrol. And the same thing with, I guess, with AMT. You know, if they're not doing that, then they should be doing the road resurfacing stuff, you know, spending more time on that.
The minimum should... I'll leave it up to...
The contract.
I personally would leave it up to the administrator.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, I would think that would be the way we'd want to direct them, sort of.
Four-hour weekly minimum to inspect nothing.
Well, and I do know, I'm gonna make this, but you know what? On that point, then even thing with code enforcement. Like if you... They're gonna be circulating for four hours, right? Why wouldn't they at least be doing some code enforcement for that?
Do y'all want me to bring the AMT contract for...
Yeah, another, another... Another day.
If you guys are going with that.
Just as...
Because those are two completely separate issues, really. There really are.
But my... All I'm saying is, why are they... Why are they out doing something that has no value when they could have been inspecting that? So in the future...
Yeah, and I do know...
We're working there, doing it, trying to...
I do know they send a separate person out to look at the roads. So it may have something to do with different people doing different things.
I mean, it should have been caught, because that is something that is the first thing you do. And I see, yeah, what you're saying, you grind that out. So then when they do the overlay, everything, and it matches up even with that curbage, you're not just putting a resurfacing on top of what's already failed road. You're grinding that corner. And that's, that, by the way, is better if you did it that way, because that's what deteriorates quickest, is right along the side of that curb.
This was our first year, so we learned a lot during this first year. And hopefully, we'll be able to address a lot of those things moving into year two, where we can reconcile that before it becomes a problem, so...
That was gonna be my point was, so next time that we're getting ready to sign the next contract, let's make sure that we've like learned from these mishaps, and let's tighten them up and figure out how we can hold people accountable.
And refresh my memory, who's up next on the next roads we're doing for this year?
Firethorn, and I'd have to look at the list, but Firethorn's on there.
So is that, is that next year, is that 2019?
2019, okay.
So they have a lot of manholes that need to be... Having a lip on the middle of a manhole would drive...
And there was an issue with that one, yeah.
So that needs milled too.
And are we gonna re... Are we gonna look at that schedule? Do we talk about readdressing that schedule?
Well, that schedule is already budgeted for this year, in this year's budget, so...
19 is, right, but the going forward.
So for the next, yeah, moving forward, yes.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it for roads.
Okay. Next up is consent and agenda, need a motion approved. The consent agenda is amended?
So move.
Alls in favor?
We tabled what we want to hire, right?
Both of you.
Two.
The only thing we're voting on is A and B.
Treasury report and tax report.
PRG appointment was added.
What?
Oh, yeah, and...
Yeah, I'll guarantee it, yeah.
Okay, so your motion to approve, amended, alls in favor?
Aye.
All right. No unfinished business, believe it or not. Next up, update on the council, we deleted that, deleted that. So discussion, consideration, production budget ordinance, OR 2018-12-02 for community events and interim planner contract.
So basically, long story short on this one is we had to amend the budget for the donations that we secured for the tree lighting, so that I could expend those funds in that line item. So that's the $2,000 that's in there. We actually raised a little bit more than that, but at the time of doing this, I just did what I knew was there, which was the $2,000. And then we had some additional night, national night out stuff that was in there as well. And then also, we had talked at the last meeting about doing an interim planner. I've got $30,000 in here for an interim planner, if that's what you all want to do. Just figured while we were doing a budget amendment, we could kind of roll a bunch of things into one. But if you don't want to do it, we can take that part out and approve it without the $30,000.
Were you already at 30,000, or were you...
No, we would be moving it in.
From?
From prospective land acquisition.
That's the only spot we could move it from? That's the only place we could...
That's the only place. I mean, we could move it from the contingency.
We can do it from a land acquisition?
Well, I mean, it's just moving, moving the money around from within the budget. We could move it from contingency or the prospective land acquisition, whichever one y'all wanted to.
Maybe what he's saying, I don't want to speak very, but is it reserved?
No.
It is reserved.
I mean, the only thing with the land acquisition is that we, you know, we had always budgeted, I think it was 10% of the budget in the last two years, we brought it down to five. So I don't know what we want.
I'm sorry, what did you say, last two years?
The last two years, we've actually brought them down to like 5%. We've put towards land acquisition, so I... What contingency, we have how much in contingency?
Well, you initially budgeted 50, and you know, we pulled some here and there out. I don't know what it is to date. I mean, it's not much that we pulled out, so...
Is it on this report?
There's no...
It might be in the...
There's no limit that we have to keep the contingency at, or there's no statute that we have to have it. Okay. I mean, personally, I would probably want to go to take that contingency. Because I think we want to keep on that acquisition.
And I don't plan on hiring anybody in the next, you know, month. So if y'all want to pull that 30,000 out...
You said your goal is by February, though, right?
Well, for a full-time hire, like an actual full-time person. This is kind of something to do in the interim, but...
That's what I was gonna ask, is this interim planner is for... Is not for like a specific project, it's just to get us by at this point?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're not gonna need that full amount, it was just what we had discussed.
Who are we using right now? You?
Yeah.
Is that working out for it?
Well, that's my question, is for an interim person, if you want to get somebody hired by February, like getting somebody interim, I mean, nothing's really gonna get done between now and the beginning of the year. If you've got somebody for a month that you're trying to train up and...
That's right.
How many people would be interested in knowing?
Well, but that's if you go to like CAG or something as an interim, right?
That's right, yeah.
But you have the add-on.
Correct.
Which is pretty expensive to go to CAG.
And so the assumption is we hire somebody by February, but we may not. I mean, I've got one application to date. They're due, they're due this week, though, so hopefully, hopefully we'll get more.
I mean, most of the interim, most of the interim things we saw, I mean, they...
That sounds all right.
Except they want a very high price, and they're giving us very little, you know, some only give us four hours a week or whatever.
And that's what you, I think that's what you have in mind, right? Is just to go like...
I mean, do you really feel, is there really, I mean, is that something that we absolutely need?
Have we reached out to other local municipalities to see if they have like a part time that's looking for extra work or something like that, that we could tap into them rather than going through CAG or something like... Because a lot, a lot of times, I don't know if they're full-time or not, maybe you can tell me if they're full-time.
Most of them are full-time.
They're all full-time.
And A and Trail just lost theirs. Their full-time person, they're looking for a full-time planner, and then...
So we're competing with them?
Deputy person, or the person under the planner just left it out, is to do the wax off.
Hopefully, I know that generally we advertise to Philister, right? Is there another thing, we've kind of talked about this before, are there other avenues we haven't tried that maybe we should in terms of trying to find?
We're advertising right now with the League of Municipalities, which is where every local government employee looks for jobs, so...
I think when we got a pinch, Chris went to, we talked about, it's not Monster, there's another...
Indeed.
Indeed.
Indeed, yeah.
Or maybe Barbie, maybe you, someone advertised in Indeed, I think. And I'm not sure how that worked out, but they...
From what I remember, we didn't get anybody that was remotely qualified. It was all like, oh, yeah, I can be a administrator, because I've had...
Like person on Nextdoor?
Cools, yeah. Yeah, experience. I mean, I love Cools, I'm not saying...
I'm hoping we get, you know, some applicants this week. Most people wait until the closing date, so after Friday, we'll know more. You know, if we need to kind of step back and find...
Well, I'm saying, looking at, looking at where at the end of the year, we got January. I mean, if we're looking to hopefully get a full-time planner by February, I mean, how necessary is the interim? I mean, we have that much that we have to do in this next month.
I don't foresee a whole lot getting done within the next month. But, you know, hopefully, we'll have somebody hired by February, but the way things are looking is...
Well, I mean, if we don't, then we'd have to look at it. But I mean, in the interim, we need to push forward with a, trying to get an interim to cover six weeks. You know, I don't know.
So is anybody looking for...
And that's your, you know, that's your, I mean, you told me if you, you tell us if you feel that you need that. I mean, it's...
No, and I'm okay with y'all removing that from the amendment, and we could talk about it again in January if it seems to be an issue, if we're not gonna get...
We're not trying to influence Joe, if you think you need it, you tell him you need it.
If you want to leave it in and take it out of contingency, like Nick said, I... Does anyone else have an opinion?
My primary concern was just that we use them for planning stuff first, like day-to-day planning stuff first, and then projects. And I don't know why, I guess I figured we would have hired a planner by now. But if we haven't, I, I think we should have some backup, just in case. I don't know. But the contingency is fine with me, too.
Yeah, part of it, I mean. I mean, I just want, I would think we'd want to hire somebody if, or we'd want to have somebody if there's things that were, were gonna fall through the cracks by not having them for six weeks, or, you know, till we get a full-time, or if there's, you know, it's pretty much work on, you know, administrator or whatever, trying to cover planning things that, you know...
Do you foresee any applications coming in in January?
Is there anything with Marvin Gardens that needs to happen?
Marvin Gardens, we have hopefully worked all that out, but...
Nothing going on at Howard?
Nothing's been, I mean, it was all...
Hails.
And I guess the other concern I have is, you know, you hired a term planner, and they're coming in with no background, no knowledge of what's going on, and they're having now to deal with this thing, and I don't know...
Especially on a day-to-day basis. It's like, it'd be one thing if you have a project.
Right, same sort of, as far as day-to-day basis, you know, again.
Does it slow down? Like, we used to get to, I don't know, we used, do you not like get people calling saying, hey, what's the ordinance for this, or what's the ordinance for that? Doesn't that drag your day down a bit, too?
Yeah, well, so then you need, then you need somebody. That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, even just that stuff.
Again, then you...
But can somebody on an interim basis like be able to do that without having somebody say... If they can read an ordinance, they should be able to.
Well, yeah, as long as they're not, like I said, they're not now going to you and say, what's... You know, you don't want somebody...
That's what I'm asking, I don't know, I haven't done planning before.
They should be able to, we just have to have...
If it's not an actual project, then they should...
What would you want? If you could wave a magic wand?
I'd like to have it there to go ahead and use if needed, so I won't have to come back for another budget amendment. And I can let you all know if I, you know, choose to do it before I do it. But it makes sense to go ahead and have it there just in case, you know, the end of the week comes around and we don't have anyone, and we need to get someone in pretty quick. We can change the prospective acquisition cost, but keep in mind, we had discussed the planner, the full-time hire with some of that money being taken from that line item. So the 20,000 that's listed in the budget amendment for salaries and related expenses, that was anticipation of having that full-time hire in in February. So we were gonna pull that money from prospective acquisitions to put, to pay for that salary. So we can pull, I don't think we'll need 30. We can pull it from contingency, and that kind of wipes that line item, but that still doesn't suffice for the salaries, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Does that make sense to you?
It doesn't need, but if you, if you don't feel like you're gonna use 30, do you want to do 20 and 20, which you have 41 in contingency?
That's fine, can do that.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, could we, could we make it that we authorize up to 30, you know, up to $30,000 from contingency as required, as needed, you know? You know, and if they don't use it, they don't use it, and if it, and taking it out of contingency, you know, using contingency...
But with the 20 for salaries coming out of where it previously been okay, which I'm fine with.
Right, yeah.
Say that when we're down.
In other words, authorizing you to up to $30,000 to, you know, have a draft, a interim planner, or projects, or whatever you need it for, you know, if it's licensed, licensed.
You have to go ahead and move it.
Yeah, we'd have to go ahead, yeah, we'd have to move. You'd have to go ahead and transfer it.
I'm saying $30,000.
Okay.
Up to 30.
Up to $30,000 before she'd have to come back and then say, well, I need more, you know?
But I think she was saying the problem with the 30, tell me if I'm wrong, was gonna leave us having to move the money later somehow when we hired a full-time planner, correct?
So we have 50,000 in prospective acquisition now. 20 of that was to pay for the full-time planner, if, you know, if we hire somebody by February. 30 of it was to pay for an interim.
Oh, oh, okay.
So we have, if you want to change where it's coming from, we only have 40, which leaves us to do the 20-20 like you were discussing.
Wait, 30, 20, 40, like what? Start over, 20-20 from, because Nick wants to come out of contingency, right?
Which supposedly we have 30,000 in contingency.
40 or more.
40. So we take 30 out of the contingency and not touch the, I don't, I don't really want to touch the land acquisition.
Right, so this is the same tool with what he was saying, which is make it 20-20, right?
No, that would be 20 out of 10.
Okay, sorry, I...
Where it got complicated was she reminded us that we had already previously said to take 20 out of land acquisition for salaries.
Oh.
So that was already approved, what, last meeting we made before? So now she's asking for 30 more to go to planner, which can come out of land acquisition or contingency, and I agree with you, contingency's fine.
Especially we now, I didn't even realize, I forgot, we took out 20 out of...
Okay, so... Yeah, if y'all are okay with the 20 coming out of perspective, then we'll take 30 out of contingency.
Well, so we've already taken the 20, you mean, didn't we already approve the 20 out of perspective?
You have, but you haven't done the budget amendment.
Oh. So you're saying it's not too late, but...
No, it's not too late to change it. We're gonna have to change the ordinance anyway, so if y'all want to just table this, it's totally fine, because I don't want to present an ordinance.
If you need to take money, if you need money, then we need to, we need to get you money if you need help.
If you need help.
So we need to figure this out.
I'm okay until January, seriously, I mean, I don't think anything can happen.
But that's like January, like what, like... Seven, it's a while.
Let's just do it for you, what's cleanest for you?
So...
Not the seven, right?
If y'all want to amend the ordinance to say...
I thought it was something...
The cleanest thing we can do is amend the ordinance to where it says professional services, 30,000. We'll add another expense, we see where it says prospective acquisition 50, negative 50. We need to add, make that say negative 20.
Instead of negative 50?
And then negative, another expense that says contingency, negative 30.
Right, that's cool.
Does that make sense? So that replaces that 50. Is everybody okay with that? Does everybody understand?
So we're only, instead of taking 50 out of proposed acquisition, it's only gonna be 20.
And then 30 out of contingency.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's...
So, and that to spare the other issue, too, right, all at once?
So that leaves our, just, I'm trying to do the math here. That leaves our prospective acquisition total from 50, 187, to now 30, 187. And then contingency from 41 to 11.
Well, wasn't this, I'm sorry, what, the ordinance was covering something else, too, right?
Yeah, it's just minor stuff. It's, it's, the only thing else it's covering is the sponsorships increase and decrease.
$187? $187,000.
$187. But it would be, it would change to 30, 187.
I got it. So are we ready for motion?
Want to try it?
Sure. I'm gonna do it the easy way. Motion to approve ordinance 2018-12-02 as amended.
There you go.
That's easy.
Right, you've got it written down there?
I've got it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, further discussion?
Yep.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is we have adoption of proposed 2019 council leaving schedule and budget schedule. Let's just start, if you would, going down, starting from the beginning. Anyone have any problem with Tuesday, January 8th? All good?
I'm sorry, let me, where was that?
Can I ask you a question before that? Do we want to consider moving away from Village Hall for at least one meeting a month? So that we have like a large meeting that we've got room for?
What are you saying?
Moving it to Banks Presbyterian Fellowship Hall, as opposed to Village Hall, on the first meeting of the month, going back to the old days.
Oh, going back over there?
Yeah, just for the one meeting a month.
It costs us $100 to, to, to use that facility a month.
So $100?
Yeah, it's $100.
I haven't had to use it.
The last time I asked him, it was just a few months ago, he said that they were still charging us $25.
Yeah, so it was 25.
I don't know.
I mean, if that's the case, I'm, I'm fine with that. Gives us a little more space, a little more, I've got no problem with that. I know it's a little bit of extra work for you guys, but, you know, I don't know.
So you're okay if it's 25, but if it's 100, do you want to...
I mean, 100's a lot.
Yeah. I couldn't even check.
I mean, I was...
I thought it was 100, so I could be wrong.
I could be definitely wrong.
I was 25.
Yeah, but you're forcing me to dump it, then.
Well, it's true, that's another way to look at it.
Well, I mean, I feel like if we're, if we know we're gonna have a large group, then we should move. But if not, like normally, if we weren't talking about the roundabout, this would be what the audience would look like right now.
Two people.
I don't know, we say that, but every time we're here...
Well, there were some big issues, there were some big precedent issues. Number one, I think if anyone even understood the fire tax thing.[1556.38] If anyone even understood the tax, fire tax thing, but I think everyone was here for the roundabout.
Yeah.
And that was the biggest thing.
So you think about it this way, like, we're gonna be talking about charter amendments, right, we're gonna be talking about Village Hall, we're gonna be talking about. Is that gonna drop people in?
Charter amendments for what?
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with doing the first meeting at Banks, I, I, I know about a hundred dollars, like you said, I always thought it was twenty-five, I mean, so we.
We can try for the first few times and then.
Just see what happens.
This falls under the category, if it's important to you, I'm fine, it's not important to me either way.
I mean, I, I, I don't have, I think, you know, we might wanna have the, the general meeting where we have a possibility of getting more people. It would be more comfortable over there, you know.
But then if we need like the screen, like for the presentations that we had, how are we gonna have those over at Banks, do we have that capability over there?
We do not. We have the, we have the stuff over there to put it, but it's work.
I don't know where the screen is over there.
Yeah. I just feel like when we could, you know, we're just trying to talk about decor, and if it was always small, it'd be a fun thing, but, you know. Trying to create something a little more professional, a little more streamlined, at least once a month, it would be kinda nice.
And then have the.
Work sessions here.
Work sessions, yeah.
I'll leave it up to you, that's just my, my thought.
So do you wanna just do a straw poll real quick?
I, I would do it once a month.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with doing that.
Okay.
I think if it costs a hundred dollars, we shouldn't do it.
Yeah, a hundred dollars.
For twenty-five. So if you check on that and that'll determine.
I think it's probably twenty-five, I, you know, I was just thinking it was a little more.
Okay. Alright, so we're starting then, we're gonna assume it's over there, and unless it, it is a hundred, we'll move it back here. So Tuesday, January eighth, everyone good?
Here we go.
Twenty-six thirty, uh. Um, it is right behind.
Calendar. Keep going. Keep going.
I was searching and searching, so.
I swear I went through this three towns.
Keep going.
Actually, I went through this, I had to find it to go through with my wife.
Keep going, keep going.
Page one hundred and fifty-seven, you have two hundred and one pages, there's no page numbers, but that we.
No, not that, not that far.
While, while we're, while we're doing this, can I just bring up a, a thought, and again, it's not on the agenda, it's not, nothing, and I don't know what, what, you know, staff. I mean, I remember when I first came on council and for the first couple, a couple of years. Staff would prepare, we had loosely binders and staff would.
Oh, yeah.
Would prepare them, you know, basically do what they did here, except they would separate it by thing in the binder, so you knew. You didn't have to go through trying to dig through papers like this, you'd have it in the binder and you could go from one to the, to the next, and it was a lot easier. I mean, I find here, like I said, sometimes I take here and I put it here, and now I don't know if I put which, which one, I put on top of each other, and it makes it a lot easier.
I'd be glad to do whatever y'all want me to do.
Yeah, I'm saying, I don't know how much work, actually, I don't think it's a lot of extra work, because you're separating it here, what you do is, I guess you'd have to punch holes in it.
But we gotta have a binder for every, every month.
Or you return the binder back at the end of the meeting?
If we buy your binder, you'd bring it back each meeting.
Yeah, we, we did bring it back.
Two of them, and each one had everyone's name on it, and so one year, one meeting, they'd get their packet, and then they would bring, we'd leave it here.
Yeah.
And then they would prepare the next one and take that one, so they're always.
So, so when we leave, we're based, cuz I take my stuff home and I put it in a file and stuff, but, but I take it out of there, but then at some point, I'd have to bring it back for the next time. But I like your idea, because this is.
We just took it out at the end of the meeting, which then the.
Yeah, you'd be.
That's mine too.
We took it on, you know, just like.
That's what I would be doing.
I just, I just thought that it was a little easier for.
No, no offense, I think these separating and the way we're doing the agenda has been fine, but then when we go to find this. I, again, always was used to, too, we had something up in the top right corner, so I knew, okay, C, a new business, C, or whatever it was. That was, now I knew I was in the right location and stuff, but.
Yeah.
To your point, yes, it gets a lot of papers, and what we did today as far as shifting, I had to go find.
That's a hard.
That.
Yeah, I'm saying.
And the, the, the CUP I had to find.
To have the meetings.
But it'd be easier to.
See, if you need to be, yeah, if you just put your bookmarks on every subject.
I'm saying, but each, 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 you know, each separation in the binder would be, you know, agenda item, presentation. Of all paperwork that you already have.
I mean, I love to write.
Put it in behind it. It's a little bit easier, cuz I find, like I said, I find myself, I just go take it from here, then I put it here, and then now which one is on top, and I can't, it takes me half, ten minutes to find it.
Let's, let's.
Yeah, I didn't wanna do it to you guys, I couldn't find the calendar.
Well, I'm sorry.
Which means you haven't looked at it, because I went through it with my wife, making sure there was no vacation issues.
Yeah, no, I could check on January eighth, if someone emailed me about it.
We're getting with January eighth, we do have some moves from nine in the morning for work sessions, I saw, to five thirty, I don't know why.
Those are budgets.
Those were the ones that you, originally you had for budget meetings, and I, this is basically what the schedule was from, from last year. Budgets, you all can change this however you want.
I wanna make sure, so Thursday, the work session would be at nine AM, um, on the thirty-first, we're good?
At nine AM?
Yeah, it's okay.
No. How would you like, Mary?
If you prefer, you, you had mentioned evenings, which is fine, I, I think mornings were actually, I made a comment like that last time.
I think the, I think the problem with evenings is then we're paying staff to stay. It's an evening, we're having to pay.
I can't do Thursday nights, period.
During the day, we have.
Even, and evenings tend to be, just go on, where, you know, we all have hard, like. Whole thing, you know, so I, I prefer to keep it in the morning.
Are you saying later in the morning? Maybe even like, yeah, maybe a little bit, but let's see, cuz what the, one of those meetings, we started at nine, and it went to like three, it was almost like too much time.
Well.
Oh, yeah, no, well, the latest has gone as two fifteen.
But if we got it here too. Well, yeah, you can't go to, yeah, three, cuz I, I would be picking up this too, but if we have the, um.
Like ten, ten thirty, then at least we're not, we know, well, I don't know, I'm really.
I, I would say we'd have to, next point before, we have to hear to know new business, and it's only extra things that we're.
This is just your work session.
Right.
Remember, it's just your work.
So we're not, we're not necessarily inclined to be adding new things onto it, so. A little later?
A little later.
Really? I mean, I'm up at six, so.
I'm, I'm up at three.
I was up at.
I go to bed at six.
I was up at four.
Unfortunately, with my, with the chemo now, I'm not, I'm not a nine in person, really, ten would be better than.
Ten, okay, we'll change it to ten.
Be personal.
Then I'd prefer.
And let me throw one more thing out there too, the only thing is, cuz I know we say we're not gonna adding anything else, but some, often, we do have like public hearings, and we've got. You know, issues that we add for counts like.
Well, work sessions are supposed to be work sessions, which is no new thing, so that's what I'd like to adhere to, but that's, that's our goal, I mean, it's not saying that. If you have. Or whoever, and everybody's fine with adding something because we didn't get to it, or we're just moving stuff over, and that's where. Um, and, and again, when you start adding things, you're adding time to, the ten o'clock now moves easily into the twelve to one o'clock hour.
Let me ask this, um, with, to, to get on that caveat, um, if we find something, um, that, um. An item that cannot wait until your next regular meeting, say it's, you know, a, um, CUP, or something to, to, uh. For public hearing or whatever, if we did a straw poll through email and say, okay, this is what we have, um, coming up, and. We have to put it on the work session, are you okay with that? And all you can do is just say, yes, I am, or no, work, no, I'm not.
To me, if it's something that absolutely has to get addressed, you don't need to take a straw poll, just put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's my feeling, like, if it's a CUP for a resident, or if it's something that DOT needs from us, or. Whatever, I mean, if it's, if it's critical that it has to get taken care of, then put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I agree.
But, but i- if it's something that can wait, then push it, I mean, I think you guys can make that.
And again, and we talked about the agenda, the work sessions were designed to talk about what is on the next meeting as well. So we're not all creating our own, oh, I want this on the agenda, well, I want this, and it's like, and then we get into, and half the stuff we're getting.
Which is what we talked about in October, which is what we tried to move to, but then we ran into November and December, where we've had one meetings, and we weren't able to do that, so hopefully in January, we'll be able to.
And I'm working on changing those rules of procedure, and hopefully we can iron all that out, and we'll all be on the same page.
But that's, that's, that's our goal, to finish up what we missed, no new business is our goal, finish up what we have, and figure out what we want for the next upcoming meeting. Or mentioning it in the main meeting, what you'd like to see on the next agenda, that's a great time to talk about.
You can have a little, um, an, an item, just like you do on the regular agenda, and say, okay, next meeting.
This is what I like to see.
Agenda items, or next meeting topics.
Yeah, just, uh, like an automatic filler, like the Village Hall is.
And I wasn't saying that to you, like, but like stuff that's like that important.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just needs to on the agenda, like, if it's, if it's that, like, we need, just need to just throw it on there.
Or a special man. What if we did a ten to, a ten AM work session, hard stop twelve o'clock?
Depends on what we allow to go on the regular meeting, then that, that dictates what we get done, like.
Sure, Robert, I think that's a great idea.
Technically, if we had a work session this, this month, there's no way we could get it done in two.
Hard stopped in a month.
Well, we touched on something earlier, or Mary did, about the presentations, they're, you know, they're nice and all, um, and sometimes they're mandatory. But anytime we can, um, avoid them, especially at a regular meeting, it'd be ideal.
Don't they be, like, I like the information, having the packet to, to go through, the slide presentation.
I mean, if I had this presentation, basically was this, we couldn't.
I, I, I read that, I got.
Yeah, he didn't really give us a, I mean, the roundabout thing.
And I just talked to the sheriff's department, they want to meet with us, they're gonna be giving us a call to come in and talk to us while we are doing our budget. Cuz they're coming in wanting to give the case for another, assuming, full-time.
Well, that would be something you would consider for a retreat meeting, would, wouldn't you have those type of.
That our retreat's gonna be two days.
Yeah, we tried, we moved it to one-day retreat.
I mean. It was a one-day retreat this year.
Yeah.
Can I propose an idea?
Sure.
I don't know if this makes a difference, but, you know, when we're talking about present, well, I, when we're talking about the agenda, you know how we used to way back, put in the times? For how long things were, remember, we keep going back to that, but this would have been really useful even for this agenda, right, because when you send out the draft. Then you can really visually see, oh, do we really have time to spend an hour and a half on these presentations? A week in advance, so we can say, hey, look, Christina or Barbie, can we move that one to another meeting, it just, maybe having those times on the draft.
She wouldn't have did that. I actually had a goal.
And, but I'm not even talking about like, uh, you know, confining us, but giving us a sense of how long this thing's gonna be.
Well, even, yeah, and I, I like that idea, but even so, tell our people that are coming in to present, you have ten minutes. Present.
That, that roundabout is not a ten-minute presentation.
But he has to do it to every single municipality, like, he has to.
But then he, I mean, let's.
He, I don't know how you get around, it's not a ten-minute conversation.
It's confusing.
Well, there have been presentations that we have had that could have been told ten, fifteen minutes, whatever we decide.
Or email to us.
Well, that's the thing, like, which honestly, I, when it first came out a few months ago, I read more or less that slide presentation, right? It was great to have it again, but if we all just did it at home, we would.
Well, like she was saying, he, he was doing it dog, municipality.
I mean, I read.
The other option is we, we, we just do presentations at special meetings and stuff, and I guess I don't wanna do them.
Well, on that note, that, like, that group meeting we had about the RAB, the, that definitely would have been a special meeting if it worked to me.
That was, had a lot more thing, I, I guess the thing with the presentation is, yeah, we could say we want a fifteen-minute presentation. But then we just gotta not, you know, somehow we start. We could extend it out there when I will buy, you know, questions and.
But the, but the super, the second super street presentation that we had, that could have been fifteen minutes.
Well, yeah, obviously.
Well, we, we, they have what they have, they're gonna present what they're gonna present, we can ask them to do what they wanna do, but to your point, Nick. We also, also have a lot of questions, and that usually is what extends that time and stuff, and, and maybe we just, we have one, two max presentations. Period, and, and then say, look, you, you just, you're on the list for February, March, cuz we're booked up until so-and-so, but. I, well, we'll tell you, the sheriffs do want to be in here before we start our budgeting process, is what they're telling us, so.
Well, first budget work session looks like it's in March, so.
Right.
Don't we normally touch on it at the retreat?
Well, we have when we had a two-day, I don't know, you know, one-day retreat, we're kinda.
Only one day. Okay, so.
And we, did we decide it was gonna be one, I mean, we, we.
That's what we did this year, that's what we did this year.
I'm saying, but I mean, we'll maybe.
Nobody.
We're, we're ten, we're ten o'clock, we, we agreed that, ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm fine with these days.
Okay.
Okay, so ten o'clock.
Each one, making sure, because there are some that I have a conflict in, and then I think Kim, you said you had a couple, but just see if we can, if anyone does. Tuesday, February twelfth, six thirty PM, everyone good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Speak up if you're in mind, council retreat scheduled for February eighth, that is nine to four PM, I show that open.
I'm good with it.
I mean, I have a hard time getting a kit off the bus at two fifteen.
But to next point is.
Oh, no, I'll be fine, it's a Friday, I'm fine, I'm fine.
So it's usually always a Friday.
I'm fine.
Um, and that's February, right?
It's only here, you wanna do the one day?
I have the bus thing at three, but it. I should be fine, but if we can just agree that mom or dad might have to run out for fifteen minutes.
Yep, okay, we're good, Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, um, it said five thirty, um, I was.
Yeah, I don't know why that was five thirty.
I don't know why they said it's five thirty, I'd rather have that at ten.
Do that one at ten, cuz it's not a budget one.
Right, good there?
February twenty.
Tuesday, March twelfth, budget work session, okay, so she's doing that right before our regular meeting, March twelfth.
Five thirty.
At six thirty, so we all good there, it's just one hour?
Yeah.
Both of those?
Yeah. Well, March twelfth and March.
Twelfth.
Twelfth, okay. Yeah, twelve, yeah, both meetings.
Okay, um.
Good, sorry, is that okay, Nick, isn't that the date on a Tuesday?
Uh, yeah, but I mean, at that point, I'll be done with this cycle, so I don't know what, things may change, you know, I mean, they may say now I have to come in on Wednesdays and do the, you know, right now it's Tuesday, but I'll finish up.
And we can work around.
Like, February eighth, I'm done with my cycle, and then I'll have some time off.
So next up, I have Thursday, March twenty-eighth, that looks like a joint planning board.
That's what you had last, well, in that.
We haven't even confirmed that with planning board yet, right?
No, that's, that's just a, a, a move-over date from last year.
So normally, that would be a work session.
Yes, at ten.
So let's do it as a ten o'clock work session right now, if that's okay, or does that not work for you?
No, that's fine, I just can't do the six o'clock on that Thursday.
But that, the, we're, we're trying to fill in a plan, and we can work later with planning board, and maybe they can join us at ten AM.
Okay, so we're gonna change that to ten?
Yes.
So we'll change it to twenty-eighth to ten AM?
Yep, and it's no longer, uh, with planning board unless you can get them to join us at that time, I think they would, I don't know if they. Does it need, or they're gonna wait for that, so I'm gonna just cross that out, Tuesday.
Do we wanna pick a date that we do planning board and PRG, cuz I did notice there was not a joint PRG anywhere on here.
We can come back.
It is ten AM, did we, we are?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the, the work session, that's a work session, right? It's Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, Thursday, March twenty-eighth becomes a work session.
Right.
And you're saying, maybe not with a planning board?
Well, yeah, we, all she was doing was writing from last year, so we don't even know if planning board would be available, we can fit them in somewhere.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Else, down the road, and then Tuesday, April ninth, I will personally be out of town that day, so, um.
Where are you gonna be?
I'm gonna be in Augusta. So you guys can.
April night.
You guys can have a meeting, and I'm not.
April ninth is anything, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I would be getting in lately and maybe joining at ten o'clock, which I'm traveling back that day, so.
Are you just going for the day?
No, I'm actually going, like.
Monday, Tuesday.
Sunday, Monday, yeah. Monday, Tuesday, and Tuesday.
I mean, if you wanna suggest a day that you're available, if we can move it, I mean, we've done that, I mean, we've done that, it depends, I know.
Wednesday the tenth?
We moved it.
Just move it one day?
That's what I had, tenth work for me.
April, April tenth?
Cause I'm good with the eleventh, too, if you need the extra day or something.
No, 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 I don't, I, I, I.
It's not like he's playing as masters.
I've been to the masters, those little sandwiches, they'll wear you out.
Oh, man, they're so good in the green grass.
I've never been, so this is a bucket list thing.
You've never been, oh, Joe.
I was invited, and, um, you know, my wife said that's.
Oh, man.
So we're doing that on the tenth? Thank you for that.
Tenth at five thirty, and then budget work session, then moving six thirty regular meetings?
So moving the ninth to the tenth.
To the tenth, yes.
That works for you?
Tuesday, May fourteenth, uh, right before the regular meeting, I think we were all good with that, right? Speak your piece.
I'm good there.
Good with it.
Okay. Okay, and.
I have a question with the next one.
The, that would be Thursday, May thirtieth, must adopt the budget.
How come we have to do, well, how come we would put a budget on a Thursday? Shouldn't we put that on a regular meeting?
That's cuz what we did last year.
What they're saying is you have to have that, yeah, so that, you can cross that off, that means nothing.
Okay.
That gives us another day, but Nick, you're usually traveling.
Again, I'm, I won't be available May thirtieth, cuz I'll probably be in Seattle, not for four weeks this time, because I probably can't go for four weeks, but. My grandson's birthday is the twenty-ninth, so.
Oh, right, okay.
Wouldn't be out there for that, so we'll be out in Seattle for probably two weeks.
You wanna put it on the June eleventh regular meeting?
Uh, again, I, I don't know exactly how long.
And I'm out of town, June eleventh.
How about Thursday, June twenty-seventh?
Well, yeah, definitely, her kids, they.
We have to do it by the thirtieth, right? Or we could cut a special meeting in between there if we.
Can we, can we get it on the May fourteenth?
That's what I was getting ready to say, can we do it on the May fourteen?
I think we can do that, budget.
They do budget on May fourteenth?
Yeah, and if we have, if we have to do a special meeting for a budget work session, we'll jam it in there.
I'll be here on the fourteenth.
Is that for a budget adopt?
Yes.
Budget adopt, right?
Yeah, so let's, so if we need the work session before, we'll keep it at five thirty, and then adopt it at six thirty? Can we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Yep.
So, remind me, the public hearing has to be announced.
Say that again?
No, I was thinking, it's not gonna be a work session, it's gonna be a presentation.
Well, at five thirty, we'll do the work session.
Right.
And then six thirty.
Nothing can really change if you're not.
It has to be the final copy of the budget.
But it's, but one of them is gonna have to be a, um.
She'll thought that's true.
Yeah, yeah, you could do public hearing.
Well, that's why I was backing up. You have the public hearing on the fourteenth at the regular meeting, is that correct?
Can we adopt it that night?
Yeah.
Yeah, after you have the public hearing.
You have to have a public hearing, so public hearing and budget adopt is what we're shooting for on May fourteenth, is that correct?
Do we wanna start it at five thirty?
Well, we do anyways, cause we, we have that, we left that one day open, so.
Okay, so we're seeing.
Yeah, if there's anything, we leave that out and you can always, obviously, if we've got everything in order by that time and Chris is good, we don't need it to say show up at six and six thirty and then it's on the agenda to be publicly heard and adopted in that day.
I guess, I guess my only, my only question on that would be, and I certainly wanna be here for the adoption, I don't wanna, not be here and have things change up. But I, but, but it looks like then we're all gonna have two budget work sessions before we have to have.
Then, then let's do it, then we'll, we'll jam a special meeting in there.
Yeah.
I think we can get it done in two, two, I think we can.
Cause I mean, normally we've done like four, you know, we've had like four budget work sessions, but if we can do it in two, I mean.
You know, it's occurring to me, I hate to prolong this, but doesn't the final version of the budget have to be in form before we do the public, the, the presentation at the newspapers, is that what you guys are having already? You know how you call for it?
You have to talk to the public hearing and then, and then advertise the budget.
Right, so I'm just wondering, will it be ready twenty five days ahead or fifteen days ahead?
Ten days.
Well, if we, if we finalize it on April tenth, then if we go to adopt it on the fourteenth, we should have plenty of time.
Cause it only has to be advertised one time.
And we have June, if everyone's in town, June twenty seventh, it's a backup.
And you don't have to present it in a public meeting, we can have it finalized and give it to you on April seventeen.
Push it. As we did this year, and let's just get it done early.
Oh, let's get it done, but we, we do a backup, we have special meeting opportunities after. But now, Nick, you're still gone the thirtieth, so.
I mean, I'm, I'm probably gone May twenty eighth to, I'm gonna say, most three weeks, so.
You'll be back by the June twenty seventh.
I'll definitely be back by June twenty, so I can't, I'm not sure, I'm not gonna be able to.
Let's try to adopt it before then.
I didn't know if you wanted to change the May thirtieth meeting, but it sounds like you'd be three weeks, so it won't matter.
Would you wanna try to, when are you, you don't know when you're leaving?
Probably the twenty eighth of May.
Twenty eighth or twenty ninth?
Well, his birthday is twenty ninth, so we'll probably be the twenty eighth.
No, and the twenty seventh is Memorial Day, so that'll push us back to twenty four.
So, that Thursday, May thirtieth is a work session anyway?
Yeah, so that should be at ten.
What, do you guys wanna just strike that, Nick?
Which, the twenty seventh?
The thirtieth.
The thirtieth.
Did I hear two people won't be there?
No, I'll be there, May thir-, are we talking about May thirtieth?
May thirtieth.
No, I'll be there.
I can be there.
Okay, no, I thought someone else.
I'm not gonna be here June eleventh.
We're shooting for nine thirty though, right? Or ten.
You're good at the thirty?
Good?
Yep.
So, then we go on to June eleventh?
We're, we're gone sometime in June, but I don't know the dates, so don't worry about me.
I'm out, I'm out of town.
And I probably won't be here back, by June eleventh.
Okay, so June's.
So, do we, do we wanna push that, since Robert doesn't know, but you'll probably not be out of town while school's in?
Does anyone know?
It's the seventh.
We have to go with two, I just don't know.
Do you wanna leave it and then what shall find your, out your schedules, if you need to change it, we can amend it?
Gone on the eleventh.
Okay, so you wanna, what date did you propose?
I can check when I, I can check tomorrow morning with Marissa, but I think we're gone right after school gets out.
So, so why don't we move it to the sixth, because Nick's still gonna be gone, but, but Robert and I will know we'll be in town, cause school's still in.
Yes.
And then that way we'll have forum, cause otherwise we're not gonna have forum.
Okay, June sixth, six thirty?
At six thirty, okay.
And then June twenty seventh, nine A Ms?
That's a Thursday.
Ten A M.
Or ten A M.
We've gone to ten.
Well, this is gonna be, that would be our regular meeting, so do we wanna have it at six thirty, even though it's on a Thursday?
July ninth.
The twenty seventh?
Wait.
No, June sixth. That's a regular meeting.
June sixth.
So, cause it would have been to say June eleventh, so that would have been a regular meeting, so do we wanna keep it at six thirty on Thursday, the sixth?
Let's make sure we got enough time to get the agenda packet out to you.
Oh, my gosh, May thirtieth to June sixth?
June sixth, May thirtieth, um.
It's like a week.
If you have your meeting on May thirtieth, that only gives us probably maybe three days to get agenda prepared and out to you before your meeting on the sixth.
Cause if I'm gone the week of the tenth and Robert's gone the week of the tenth, then we move to the week of the seventeenth and we run into the same problem with the meeting on the twenty seventh.
Correct.
So, either way, it's either we do it then or we just.
Take your poison.
Yeah.
Do you wanna just leave it at the eleventh and I'll double check our vacation schedule or email you?
You know, you're right.
I'm gone, so.
Yeah, you're definitely gone.
You know there's summer, summer league needs, you're not supposed to be gone in June.
I know.
What's that?
It's summer, summer league, she's.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Supposed to be gone, but I'll miss, I'll miss two, I'll miss two meets that week.
It's, uh, ten thirty three.
I know, I think I got ten more dates to go through, cause we have to.
So, where's, so what are we doing, are we leaving at the eleventh?
Let's leave it at the eleventh.
Yeah, eleven.
I'll email everyone.
It's six thirty.
Okay.
Do it at six thirty.
I'm gone, so.
Thursday, June twenty seventh? No, wait, you're, we're, June eleventh, we're leaving it.
I know, I'm gone.
I mean, I'm sorry, the sixth.
No, they.
You waited, you waited the sixth.
Can we do the sixth?
Staff, staff is saying that they're having a hard time getting staff, getting the packet out, but either way, like, if we don't do it, I mean.
Right, so they're just, we'll know and have to be accepting that packets are gonna be. June sixth, I'm gonna guess is gonna be a light meeting, because Thursday, there's much.
Okay, Thursday, June sixth.
Okay, so now it's going to be the sixth.
All right, back to the sixth, okay.
All right.
You can always change it in March, or whatever.
June twenty seventh.
Thursday, June twenty seven, ten A M.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah, yeah, don't worry about it.
Okay.
July night.
July night?
July night, I will be in Pennsylvania or China.
Ooh, wow, really?
I'm out, I'm in Pennsylvania for a wedding and then I'm flying right to China from there, so.
Get your shot.
So, you guys can, we got ten days, you knock yourself.
When are you leaving?
Um, we haven't finalized dates yet, but we, I know I'll be in Pennsylvania, or July.
Before that.
Sixth is a wedding.
Okay.
And I, we will be coming back here and trying to plan our trip, because we have a window, I think the seventh. What I have blocked out is seventh through the,
Yeah.
Uh, seventh through the twentieth for China.
Yeah, so I mean, you're, you're, you're gonna be basically gone too long to try and change.
Okay.
Yes.
Date, really.
So, you guys can have a meeting anyways. Hopefully, you'll, you'll, you'll come to agreements where you won't have a split decision on something, so, or you'll have to table it, I guess, right?
Well, yeah, it's what decision will.
Is that right? And I'm sorry, but.
That's the way it works.
It's another bucket list, I'm doing two bucket lists this year, so.
All right, the twenty fifth?
Um, twenty fifth, I'm back in town, ten A M.
Good, yeah.
Tuesday, August thirteenth.
Are you here for a particular item? I don't know you. Okay, I was just thinking, there's, there's something you're just waiting for.
She's writing down.
The thirteenth, I'm gone.
You're gone.
I'm gone.
Tuesday, August, okay, you're gone, so what do you want, Kim, would you like another?
I mean, I leave the eighth of August.
You wanna say the seventh?
I mean.
Or sixth?
Then you're running into the week before, oh, no, that's no, actually, because, yeah, you've got a whole week in between there. We could do the sixth.
You guys good on this?
Cause the last day before that's the twenty fifth, you have a full week in there between meetings for agendas.
We were in August thirteenth, it's not gonna work for her, she'll be out of town.
I could do the sixth.
She's saying the sixth, seventh are good for her.
Six would be better.
Six would be better for me, too.
So, twenty, twenty fifth to the sixth? Yeah, it's almost, almost two weeks.
Almost two weeks.
It's almost three weeks, so it's.
Sure?
I'm, yeah. I'm good if you wanna go to the sixth.
You good there?
Everybody else is.
I never know this much.
So, we're going to sixth?
Okay, it's six thirty, yeah, that, that would be great.
And then Thursday, August twenty ninth, ten A M.
Yep.
I'm good as far as right now, yeah.
And Tuesday, September tenth, six thirty P M, we're good?
Yep.
Thursday.
Sorry, did you say September tenth, six thirty?
Yep.
Oh, we're moving it?
No.
No, it's, it's scheduled.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, it's the second Tuesday.
No, it's the first meeting, it's every six.
It's September twenty sixth.
Tuesday, it's the tenth, yeah, and then Thursday, the twenty sixth is a ten A M, I'm good there.
Hold on, wait, is everybody good?
Wait, wait.
Oh, no, Joe, jeez.
Wait, I thought they said Thursday.
Whoa.
Tuesday, September tenth, at six thirty P M.
Yeah, is everybody good with that? Okay, good.
Okay, and then I said Thursday, September twenty sixth, at ten A M.
Okay.
Tuesday, October eighth, at six thirty P M.
Yeah.
Now, or forever.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thursday, October twenty fourth, at ten A M.
Yep.
Good, and then one day in November and one day in December, and that would be the tenth of, twelfth of November?
Yep.
Yep.
And the tenth of December. All right.
So, we need to schedule a joint P R G and a joint planning board with these relevant dates and/or we can do a special meeting.
Well, I mean.
It's probably better to do a special meeting, don't you guys think?
I mean, going, going back, I mean, I'm just revisiting the, the retreat, I know we did one day last year, I guess, but, I mean.
Wait, what do you mean, you guess?
Well, I mean, I honestly don't remember, remember, I mean, but, I mean, in the past, we've, we've always had the second day basically being the joint meeting with the planning board and joint meeting with the P R G and whatever little things we had left over from the first day.
Yeah.
So, I mean, is it?
You wanna make it a Saturday, too, Friday, Saturday?
And that's what we usually do, but.
I mean, I watched you guys do it this week, you're just watching from here, and it looks like by the time you go to have those joint meetings, cause with the planning board and the P R G, they get, they get pushed off, they get delayed, in a way, just observation, maybe when it's compact and in two days, you're like, for sure.
I'm saying, that, that had always been for years, that had been our.
For lopping.
Long, I can remember, you know, it was always a two day thing and basically we had the planning board and P R G the second day and whatever leftover things we had, maybe from the first day, we wanted to continue.
Counsel.
So, I mean, I don't know, I know we did, I don't know why we did one day last year, I remember.
I think.
I'd be okay with it, I just, um, what I haven't liked about previous retreats is this need to fill up two days. So, if it's a full day of actual work that we're doing, that's great, if the next day is a couple hours with each board, that's great. But I don't think it needs to be half, half to fill up eight hours for two days.
No, but I mean, I think, unfortunately, I think we have a lot of things that probably could almost take the part of a place of a, of a work session, you know, in there also, you know.
Yeah, I'm not against it.
Yeah, I'm saying, I think we have a lot of things that, you know, could, you know, use some more discussion, we might have. But I mean, if, obviously, if we run out of things, then we're not gonna just say we have to stay eight hours, because we.
Well, I, I would like counsel to kind of start floating ideas of what you want to talk about in the meeting and then maybe we can get some guidelines. I'll sit down with you and figure out what that agenda looks like, and is it gonna stretch into two days? I hope not, I think that's what we got to is one day, because it's tough for.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't stretching into two days, it was then we had the joint meetings with the, we were able to accomplish that at that time and get that over with for the year and not have to try and maneuver it from March, no, no, I can't make it March, I'm gonna do it April, no, no, I can't make it April.
But if we, if they know, if, if planning board and P R G know coming in that they've got an hour and a half in each, and that's three hours of the meeting that day, and we, you know, we fill it in with everything else, but just leave time to see if we can get it between nine and five, it's eight hour days, it's five hours to get, you know, things we wanna talk about.
Actually, we used to stop them at two thirty on Saturday, that's the way, remember that?
Yeah.
We stopped them earlier, yeah.
So, Saturday would be nine, it would be eight or nine, an hour and a half of P R G, maybe two, and then the planning board would be the next two hours. And everyone would have lunch, then you, the council would come back and do their last, like, find a little feel good council comment thing, and then they'd be gone by the, two thirty.
Usually two thirty.
Yeah, usually, that was the aim.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, it kinda gets the P R G and, and thing done, you know, and just where we're not trying to maneuver around the rest of the year and having issues, I, I, I mean, unless somebody's got a real thing that they don't wanna come on Saturday. Personally, I don't, it doesn't bother.
I'm thinking that, um, maybe the reason why we had it one day and we didn't have the boards is because that was the day that P R G and planning board weren't able, weren't available for that day.
Well, yeah, I, I guess we'd have to stand on the ballot.
From, from what I remember last year when we were planning this, is, and, and I was brand new, was that planning board and P R G both expressed that when they were brought into the retreat, that it was like during a time that there was always food and nobody from council was paying a lick of attention to what they were saying, they were too busy eating.
That's not true.
I'm tell, I'm telling you, that is what I remember.
I never felt like that.
I'm just repeating what.
I, I think we throw out them on that day.
That's right.
I, I said we.
I can't make it up, I heard it somewhere, somebody said that at some point.
You know, honestly, I thought it was you that wanted to change the retreat last year.
If it was a nice day, you didn't want the first nice day.
There we were, prettiest day of the year.
There's always planning when it's freezing right now. That's right.
Well, it's, it's February and then have a potential of having inclement weather, so.
So, do we wanna throw out and throw out in the retreat, the February eighth, to both planning board and P R G, see if they have time? And then, and also float in the idea of the next day in the morning.
No, give them one option, don't.
Well, no, here's the deal, though, but if we, if we fill up our, our day in the retreat and we don't have time for them, then that's gonna be option two.
I'll, I'll fill both of them out tomorrow.
Okay.
And see what they do.
I just remember.
See what we had on the.
Like an hour overlap with the P R G and the planning board and all of us were there, and it, I don't know, I'm partial, that, cause it was really, it was a really good feel good team building.
And some, and some planning board, some P R G things overlap with planning board, issues that are gonna have to go to the planning board.
Exactly, it was almost like the one time a year we'd hear like from the P R G board as a planning board, this is totally opposite of what I heard last year.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, in ten years on the board, I mean, nine of them, we always had two day retreats on them, last year was the first and only time ever.
Heck, we used to go to Ashville.
Yeah, we used to, yeah, we would.
So, we're at one day right now? And just, let's just say, let the council leave open the next day for morning, not to exceed lunchtime.
And not to start before.
Maybe nine, nine A M and two.
Nine thirty, if we can't start our work.
Or nine thirty to twelve, depending on.
That's fine.
Okay, does everyone agree on that?
I mean, I, I probably said it at two, but.
Till what time with that?
Till three o'clock, nine thirty to two, instead of nine thirty to twelve, I think. But it's less is less.
Speaking, if that was a concern, twelve is almost always when we would get downstairs or outside to eat our meal. You might want to, but you guys will work it out and let us know when we have a, when they come out the agenda, right?
Yeah, we'll get it straight.
Yeah, we have time to finalize, I think. Two minutes.
Okay, so we're good there? All right, so we missed our mark on a couple of things, are we gonna just make a motion to table the rest that was on the agenda? Is everyone okay with that?
I don't know.
I mean.
Well, I, I really wanna try to, given that Christina has a good hour to drive.
I know, I just remember she mentioned that she really needed us to do the roundabout lighting.
I mean, are y'all okay with the roundabout lighting?
Oh, that's an ugly light.
I do not like that light.
That is terrible.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what they're choosing.
The only thing that I said was ugly.
Talking about doing a downtown corridor.
I'll get some information, I'll get some information before.
Sorry Christina, that was, all I wrote was no ugly.
No ugly.
I did, I wrote no ugly.
Motion on the table to adjourn, so what?
Well, hold on a second, um, we are gonna.
Let's take inventory.
Table that, okay.
I don't wanna miss anything like that.
So we're looking at, okay, we're setbacks.
Right, setbacks, for example, that's a big deal.
Well, we're gonna talk about that at the special meeting.
Yep, um, consideration roundabout lighting where it sounds like there's people in code of conduct that can wait and deal with the retreat. Potential change in amending structure governing law, including the number of members of the council, I mean, that pushes us back, but.
I mean, I would like, I would have liked to have gotten some kind of discussion started tonight, I mean, cause again, we.
Real quick, you know much what has to be done with that, cause I think we all talked about moving to.
Put it on the ballot.
Instead of just changing our charter like we were gonna do and getting the community in up, or we need to take the actions now to.
To get it on the ballot.
To get it on the ballot, but then it's.
It's the same process, it's just instead of you all voting on it, you put it on the ballot.
Put it on the ballot.
Starts at the whole hearing, you still have to.
We could do it.
My, my, my thing was if we, if we could, you know, discuss it and adopt the charter amendment and, and in the meantime, trying to engage the public so that we don't get the kickback on it, then we wouldn't need to put, we, we could adopt the charter amendment and as long as, if we, if we, if we feel that the public is not gonna, you know, challenge it, then it would pass. I mean, if they don't file a petition or anything, it would pass and then we might be able to, I, my hope was to get it to be effective for the next election. For the November election and that, that we need time.
I think this is a much longer discussion than what we're willing to sit here and.
What amendments are we talking about, it depends.
Sit here and talk about.
I'm saying, we, that's what I'm saying, we wanna.
But.
Adding two members?
But you're also, we talked about at-large and how you divide that up, that, that becomes a.
You probably want like someone from Cog to come down and do a study of what your district should be based on.
Yeah, and, and, and we'll have a check-in with board of election when they need to have this, in order for it to be effect, you know, be able to be on the ballot if it.
I think what we're saying, Nick, when we talked about adding more council members, which I don't have a problem with, but also looking at add the, the at-large and all those things and how they do that.
Yeah, of course, that's, and that's what I'm saying, that's why.
Then it's really just getting it to the ballot, they're gonna have that stuff, I wanna say, in June, July. Cause it goes to print.
So I think it's a ninety day deadline, like.
Right, it goes to print, you know, cause we have our deadline to sign up before we're gonna run again.
Right.
And then they get that all on print, so all that has to go to print and has to be discussed and stuff, so.
Melanie, can you find out all the details on what needs to happen for that and then we can talk about it in the morning?
You wanna get it in front of it?
Well, I just wanted, again, because we have to discuss whether it's six, whether it's five, whether, you know, it's districts or how many at large.
Cog probably should come in.
What other people are doing, what other towns are doing.
I believe, I believe.
I have the, I did a database, I use this Cog, the SOG database and I, cause they have one available, and went through towns within certain ranges. Anything between two thousand population and ten thousand, ninety-three percent of them have six council members. The mayor does not vote districting.
When you say six, does that include the mayor?
It includes the mayor.
So it's five in one?
Yep, ninety-three percent of them. Uh, mayor doesn't vote, six council members and districts, right, I'm sorry, it wasn't a tie.
Well, somebody's absolutely.
And then, but districting was not on that database, so I don't know how, I don't think, I also didn't understand the code for it. Um, it wasn't on the database, but I completely consent to you, you can love it.
That's it, this is all stuff we need to discuss, I just wanted to, you know, it's gonna be more than one discussion, so I wanted to get the ball rolling a little bit and getting some feedback. Everybody on the little, thinking about what they, you know, what it.
The thing that seems most arduous is, I would think, is districts, like, all the other things we could find, talk, there's a lot.
You need someone independent to do that.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
Yeah, yeah, and you need to find out.
Exactly, Cog, okay, so let's just get Cog in here.
Ideally, in my mind, you'd want the, the districts to represent an equal, fairly equal amount of population, you don't want one having three hundred people and one having fifty, two thousand. So I think we.
And that's what they do.
And that's, yeah, then we have to figure out how we do that and, you know, and I mean, again, I feel that that would be good because you know, a lot of times we've had where we've, like I said, me and Ross lived four houses away from each other, I mean, Ron and Anthony lived two blocks away from each other. We were having disproportionate represent, representation possibly, you know, perceived as from one area. Whereas this way, you would, you know, we'd have districts that wouldn't go out to the east end, you know, everybody would have.
Fair representation.
Fair representation for their, if they felt, you know, for their own particular needs in that area. So, I mean, then the, the districts would be only voted on by the people, a representative would only have to run in that district, he wouldn't run. And then the at-large member and the mayor would obviously run, you know, everybody would vote for them, so I mean, I just. Yeah, if you're on a ballot, if you're representing the first, District One, only the people that live in District One would vote for you. Nobody else in the village.
Makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I was saying, so, I mean, so you're representing their interest, you know, you're, I mean, you're representing the whole village's interest.
A lot of times it is that, it's just when you try to change the, the represent, that's what, you see all the things getting on.
On a bigger scale.
State level and they're all.
Gerrymandering in districts, but, but we don't, I don't think we have that issue here pretty much, but, you know, we don't have really that. And the at-large members, like I said, if there's one at large or two at large, and the mayor, would one count village-wide, so they, they'd have to, you know, have the votes from everybody in the village. They'd be responsible, you know, basically representing.
I just don't know if we can get that all done before, or if we did a charter change and were able to do that and then have it for the ballot, so then it's effective. Usually, I think where we got in trouble is when we started to do a charter change and then we got the community all upset, so what's, what's. I know, I know they tried to do that before and, and making my term four years and then went right back after we started butting heads.
It really should be four years.
And it, you know, it's like, no, it really shouldn't.
But that wasn't, that wasn't the, that wasn't the community.
No, I'm saying they shouldn't have changed it back to two, within a certain amount of time, two years.
That, that wasn't the community that, that did that, that was the council.
Right, but what I'm saying, the council has done that before and then changed it back and then, then we got the pushback of saying, okay, you should do, you should let the community decide if it's four or six.
We shouldn't change them, right?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly wanna engage the.
You're both right.
And we wanna engage the community.
You said upfront, you wanna get the community.
Yeah, I mean, we wanna publish it to, you know, get, you know, whatever we have to do to, you know, get the community to say, we're having this meeting, come and voice your opinions, let us know what you think or or, you know, at least hear what we're saying and then respond, tell us what you, you know, your feelings are, I mean, but. Again, I mean, if it can't be, if it can't be done, it can't be done, you know, that fast, I mean, I, I'm just, I would personally like to see it be able to be on the ballot in November, if it's at all possible, if it's not.
I'm almost afraid to ask you questions, cause I have them, but I feel like it might prolong it, but, so that would.
Yeah, there's a motion on the table.
Yeah, so it feels like, but, cause I'm not sure if I understood, like, the whole timing portion, I know we talked about it a couple of times, but now I think I might be confused. So I guess, yeah, do we, do we table it, do we, I don't know, where do you wanna go?
I think we need more information to have a more educated, full-on conversation about timing and what needs to happen when and I just think we need more information.
Well, I mean, as far as, as far as that, but I think as far as discussing the makeup of the board, whether it's four, or five, six, I don't think we need any.
No, but I don't, I think that's gonna be a much larger, longer conversation than what we're.
Unless you took a quick straw poll, are you okay with six council members?
No, because, no, because I don't, I don't know, I need to do research on like what makes up a better number, I mean, I can't, I'm not.
Sorry, yeah.
I, I, I can't make that decision right now, I'm not gonna do a straw poll right now.
And I wasn't looking, I said, I just had an offer discussion, not discussion, consideration, I mean.
No, I know, but they're just a mustake straw poll, I'm not, I'm not.
Can you get some information for the January meeting?
I am not.
I'm just wondering if there was a number that would, you would be.
No.
I can send you this spreadsheet, uh, I have it if you wanna wanna look at it and then you can see what all the town.
Is there anything you can do in the meantime to the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll put the information as a timeline for, I think there's even a link you can jam. So y'all wanna table that and we'll put it on the January?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
She can get information, she wants to send it.
You can send it to us and then be part of the packet, okay?
Does she got the?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I just wanted the discussion, I mean, I spoke to pretty much everybody individually and they all, everybody.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all on board with it, it's just a matter of, we need. Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to have some, you know.
Yeah, of course, yeah, I would extend, I wasn't, I was just wanted to get the ball a little bit spun, maybe having people think about it and
Yeah.
And know that we, we should stop thinking about it and looking at it.
Okay, so we'll put it on the next agenda, Village Hall we'll talk about next agenda, review of action items that would be up next, pardon?
Oh, I would, okay.
Well, we got.
Still a motion on the table.
I know, but we do have to review action items before we.
Not necessarily.
Sorry, can I just double check you guys, cause I, you know, we, you don't wanna do anything on Village Hall since we, at all?
That's, yeah, I was just gonna say, do we, do we wanna look, I mean, again, Village Hall is. Keep pushing it out now to, to January, I mean, we wanna.
Unless you wanna call for a special meeting, John, but.
Okay, I would roll my motion, let's, if you wanna touch on Village Hall and action items, but.
Well, I mean, action, action items should be quick, I mean, Village Hall might be a little bit longer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Village Hall's gonna be like at least an hour.
I just know, you know, what, what you guys were interested in.
I'd be more inclined to do a special meeting before we did, you know, that, but it's, it's up to you, I mean, it's, it's, I'm just trying to.
If we're gonna do a special meeting next week for
RIB.
Whatever we're doing next week, what are we doing roundabout, then why don't we just?
Add to that?
Add to it.
Village Hall?
Yeah, do, do like an hour for roundabouts and an hour for Village Hall and we'll have a two-hour special meeting.
You guys all right with that?
Yeah.
Two items on the special meeting.
Two, two items on that, that'll be an action item.
So that'll be the.
Is that okay? I just, I mean, I, I wanna go through it, but quite honestly, I did not have a chance to go through what you sent.
Pulling your stuff down.
And, and I've got, I like things with those, but I don't like things from some of these, so I feel like it's gonna be more than a ten-minute conversation.
Well, so, so we'll do it on the special meeting on the eighteenth.
Yes. You got that, Barbie?
A special meeting on the eighteen?
So the special meeting on the eighteenth will be a, to discuss Village Hall.
And the roundabout.
And the roundabout, okay, those two issues.
Someone remind me what time we said.
Six.
Ten thirty.
Six.
Six, six PM.
Six o'clock.
I said, I thought you said what time did, you say was the cutoff date, and I said ten thirty, and it's eleven right now.
What time were you, what were you asking, what time the special meeting was? Six.
Right?
Yeah. Or what time were you asking, what time the cutoff was? Six.
What time is the meeting?
Six.
Six o'clock.
Six.
And it goes to eight?
Eight.
Six to eight.
I got TV on at eight, so.
Putting it off eight?
Do you have anything for us, Barbie, thank you.
I mean, yeah, that's the goal.
I mean, that's the goal.
Really?
The goal, the goal.
Okay, so we're gonna have a.
Yeah. So we're gonna, roundabout for an hour, Town Hall for an hour.
We can do it.
Sure.
We can try.
We just have, we just have to tell Meadowlark and whoever's here, we got an hour.
So, do you want me to review the actions, do you want me to review the action items? So the Union County, um, well, not Union County, invite them, special meeting for the right-of-way slash utility change.
Union Power Company, not Union.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
No, but we want, we want DOT there too, right?
Yes, I've got that, Ken Cole, Village Hall, talk to Gillette about the right-of-way holes at Joe Kerr, Marvin, Marvin in Newtown, get a fifty-scale plot from NC DOT in preparation for that meeting, um.
Um, real quick, you are, when, when, Union Power, you are gonna have them look at potential costs, so they're gonna come in there with hopefully an estimate for.
We need a number.
Yeah.
Ten road to HMA, okay, I don't know, so note for myself, um, letter of recommendation by January or February for the fire tax, which we'll get together on, um, getting something with McClendon between now and then, look at amending the AMT contract, looking at inspections, and let's see. Notebooks for all agenda packets and tabs for cancel, talk to PRG Planning Board about meeting on February eighth and or the next day.
Oh, one thing, can we at the very least send the drawings to the planning board so that we don't miss that date?
Yes, um, can do that.
I'm gonna make sure that they can see, hold on.
And.
For their next meeting.
Architectural drawings.
Pictures of what they saw.
Have Melanie do research on the charter change and have that at the January meeting and potentially cost of doing Cog for districting, that's all I have.
Oh, I definitely, we definitely need to call Cog.
Yeah, maybe they can do it in service or something.
Yeah.
Do you guys wanna do council comments or not? Okay, I, I do wanna say one thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 my only thing is, I mean, all these things that we didn't touch tonight, we're now moving to the January meeting. Now, I know Christina said something to January meeting, already looked packed before we did this, I mean.
We'll, we'll separate the two, we'll get two of them in January, so I'll, I'll strategize it.
We have to start prioritizing, I think.
Yeah, well, what we need to get done, but I mean, uh.
Unless we wanna have one good special, like, real meeting to catch up, but I'll leave that to you after you look at everything.
I just, you know, again, we're gonna, we already got a, from what I understood, we have a pretty packed January meeting already and now we're in all these things, so I mean, I we might have to move things to the work session.
I am completely open to recommendations of how to make these things shorter.
Honestly.
It's just, it, you, we have ideas and you just, it's, it's frustrating because.
I mean, there may just be too many, too many things on the.
There's just too many things on it, which is, pushes everything out on, and you know, what, what can you get to, what can't you get to, so, but I agree.
Hour-long, hour-and-a-half long.
I think we just have to stay on point with the topic, it's really what.
We are on point, but what we talked about that took the most time though was very important stuff.
Yeah, I think.
It affects all of us, as far as with that, and you're right, it's a different meeting.
Well, and we can't ask questions, and I, I say, wait, I don't know who the person is to ask, like, am I the only one that was surprised to hear DOT say that we could've just told them to handle it and they would've handled it?
I would've appreciated that.
I would've liked to have known that, that June.
June fourth?
They never said that.
Because then we would have the roundabout being built next summer.
Correct.
Yeah.
I, I found that a little frustra, I, I like to be.
Not surprising, but frustrating, yeah.
Yeah, it's frustrating to find out that, that if, if we had, back in June, said just do it.
Figure it out, make it work.
You know we're on board for twenty percent, don't get us involved, I mean, you could say that, I guess, but that's.
I thought they needed us to help work out the homeless stuff.
I think they're trying to do, take the high level and say, we're trying to have you, but then they also said, we're not necessarily gonna go with what your recommendations.
That was.
They, they don't wanna do, we don't wanna do.
That was more frustrating to me, they were saying, we can spend the time to do all this and then they say, yeah, you know what, we're gonna go with this.
That's the worst part.
Yeah, that was, that shocked me the most.
And that's what I told the landowner too, I said.
We could talk all the way.
We, we can go to bat for you, but at the end of the day, what you're hearing is they're gonna do what they want to do.
Why haven't they just been like in here?
I don't know, you know what?
Because they.
My belief that's.
Don't come in here early.
Easier to let us try and work our way through with the landowners than, they got plenty of projects they can work on over here, right?
I know, but somebody's gonna get killed at that corner.
I agree, but my point being, we could ask more questions like, hey, do you really need us on this, you know, what do you need from us?
Well, like, fire tax thing, like, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, so do we really need to sit here and?
Well, you went to the meeting, maybe not.
Well, I don't think so, I think we can, we can, we can push back on that, yes, I mean, there's, whether or not.
Well, but that's a, that's a good question.
People in that room weren't necessarily buying, but they were selling, you know, in, in the end, and again, Christina, give her credit, she, she asked, and, and I'm kidding, not kidding you, there was maybe one other question in the room and she must've asked twenty to them questioning and we were on point and we went right to the fire chief, he was all over it, so.
But she probably wants her reward to be go, to go home.
Yes, so, any more council comments, I do wanna say one thing because it just, just broke my heart, two things that happened, two losses with great sorrow, a loss of both the wife of our sheriff Eddie Capiti. Uh, unexpected yesterday morning, his wife passed away, um, so we could do some, send something that, or figure out something like that. And then I talked to Brad Borback today, he's the mayor of Weston Chapel, he lost his daughter, um, she was a special needs kid, a daughter of forty-one years old. And he shared that information with me today in my conversation with him, so, again, if there's something that we could do to, um, reach out to them, let them know that our condolences are taken on them. Um, and I'll leave the rest, that's all, I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that, that it was.
I didn't know about that.
Yeah, I just learned about that today.
I know about it, it's been.
And one last thing is that staff and PRG did an amazing job with the tree lighting, it looked amazing, you guys did a great job.
Really did a nice job.
Awesome, 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 really, really, really good job, really good job.
And I think, to your point, the only thing I would change is.
Why the tree earlier?
First thing and then have the celebrations, so people can enjoy, cause they leave right after the dance, a lot of them start leaving.
And, and Nancy made a good suggestion, just do three to five instead of four to six, because then if you have anybody with the high school and there's inclement weather.
That's true.
They cancel all activities after five, so then it's done and they can't cancel.
Ah, okay.
And that was Nancy's, or at least that's what you said at the end, I don't know who else, but.
Um, with that, I have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Barbie, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Nice job as always.
I know we didn't have council comments, but I just would like to say that I think the meeting tonight went pretty well, we conducted civilly and I think we've accomplished certain things in the, hopefully continue.
Does anyone know who that guy was?
I don't know yet.
I hung in there too.
You hung in there too?
Don't I get cookies for staying the whole time?
Take some cookies.
I don't, I, they're not, they were not tasty, I'm sorry, that one that I ate was.
Can we just leave it?
Not delicious.
It feels like we just need to put stuff away.
Cause you're used to being one of the ones cleaning up.
Well, since they've been there since Saturday, I'm thinking.
Picking up other mess.
Do you want us to do anything, Barbie?
No, we'll get this tomorrow.
You wanna take all these cookies too?
I'll try, I'll, I'll take care of it.
Not after you got rave reviews from me on them, they were not good. Joey, you wanna take these cookies, cookies?
No, I do, I do. I'll take some.
I'll take them, Barbie.
You'll take them?
Give them to my grandkids, if they like them, they could, nothing, they could throw them out.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I don't keep them busy.
The readers.
Give them a choice.
I don't think they're trying to give away the back of cookies, Joe.
No, give it up.
I think it's like a set of.
Really, we've been, we're waiting for lunch tomorrow.
She has, uh.
See, tomorrow's the day that I need a two-hour delay.